This is motion time for me. I'll do my best.
Exactly.
April 27th is a date that might have been on my tombstone at Stray Creek. My cousin David Wigley had died. I'd been in and out of his house all week, waiting for his death. Every time I was there, I spotted this fearful-looking dog. The more I was there, the more I heard about this dog. I'm Jean. Over and over, she was telling the very kids, said, "Run this dog off, it's gonna hurt somebody." One time, when church people were coming in after David died, they tied it to a tree out to keep it from the church people. So, this could have been somebody else besides me, but the day after David died, I went with the family to make funeral arrangements. I told them, I said, "I'm going home to make a big pot of soup for you, so y'all have dinner today." They went home, I went home, made the soup, brought the soup back. When I got out of the truck, Josh Wigley, Wigley, who is the grandson of I'm Jean, met me at the truck. We took the soup inside. I said, "I'm Jean Wigley, a few minutes." And I had stepped on her nail a couple of days before, and I had cellulitis, and I said, "I need to go home, soak my foot and prop my foot, try to take care of my foot." And so, I hugged her by and walked by Josh and patted him on the shoulder and told him bye. Walked out on the porch, and I looked the yard over. Everything I'd heard about this dog was in my mind. And I said, "I'm gonna make sure this dog's not here before I head to my truck." And I could see no dog anywhere. Stepped off the porch and took six or eight steps, and out of nowhere, I looked up. This dog came flying through the air, came right down on me. I hit the ground, and he didn't cease to try to tear me up. I'd had surgery two weeks to the day before. All I could think of was hold my hands over my throat and keep them from getting to my throat, because I'd heard tales that once a dog like this got to your throat, they would lock down on your throat and they'd kill you. First, I felt my jaw rip loose. Next, I felt my scalp being torn loose by this dog. It seemed like forever. It must have been seconds, minutes, but after a period of time, I ran out of strength, and I thought, "I'm gonna die. This dog's gonna kill me." And I'd become reconciled that I was gonna die under that big dog. Then a thought went through my mind, started screaming for help. And I started screaming, "Somebody help me, somebody help me." That's the last thing I remember. I went into a state of shock. I don't remember Josh Wigley coming out of the house and seeing the dog, running down, trying to pull the dog off of me by the collar. He said, "I couldn't do nothing with this dog." He said, "I thought I gotta find something hard." Looked out across the yard, saw a golf club standing up against a tree. He ran for this golf club. I don't know how long it took him. He showed me where the tree was and where I'd fell to the ground under the attack of the dog. Came back and beat that dog and beat it. He said, "I'd love to never beat this dog off of me, Brother Hayman." Finally, the dog let me go. I remember somehow, after that, getting to my feet. I remember seeing blood spurting all over me, coming out of my face, coming out of my head. And I remember, I put my hand in him, I pushed my jaw back up with this hand, and I reached up and pushed my scalp down with this hand. And I somehow managed to get in the house, fell down in a chair there. They'd called 911, and the ambulance came, and they got me in an ambulance, and the lady that worked in ambulance, she looked at my wounds, and she said, "This, Raymond, your wounds are too bad to be taken to a local hospital." She said, "We need to take you to a big hospital, because you're gonna have to have some plastic surgery." She said, "You only go to Gaster and Huntsville." And I managed to say, "Take me to Huntsville." And I thought I'd bleed to death. I didn't realize I severed the main artery going through my jaw and through my lip. Wet cloth after cloth, towel after towel, on the way to Huntsville Hospital. And I thought, "I'm gonna bleed to death before I got there." Paramedics did everything they could to stop it. They wrapped me and wrapped me, it kept, it was bleeding out my mouth, and it was protruding out my mouth. Another time at the hospital, almost led to death. After they'd sewn me up, they thought, "They had me, the bleeding stopped." And they took me for x-rays, and I told x-ray technician, I said, "I'm bleeding inside." She said, "Just gonna take a few minutes, we'll take you back to your room." And they took me back to the room. She put me inside, she said, "If you need anything, mash the red button." I thought she'd surely go tell the nurses I was bleeding. And I lay there, and big old clots, big old balls of blood was coming out of my mouth, strips of blood that had clouded that long. And I began to choke, and I began to strangle. I thought, "I made it through the dog attack, and I'm gonna die here in the hospital." And all of a sudden, the door opened up, and it's my wife and my daughter. My daughter went to screaming, and they came and saved me again. I would not be here today. I'm totally convinced I would not be here today if it weren't for Josh Wigley. I believe that dog would kill me, because I had run out of strength. I couldn't hold him off no longer. And I was reconciled to die. The reason I'm here today is for one purpose. That dog was quarantined for 10 days, and he was brought back to his owner. And in the last week, I know two particular times that dog's been right back in the community. One day, he was right back on the Wigley porch, one night since he was given back to the owner at the house where I was attacked. Last Friday, he was out running the neighborhood again. We got people in this house this morning that's been attacked by dogs in Rainsville, Alabama. One lady, her name is Sabra, on Garrett Street, attacked by dogs. She's crippled for the rest of her life because of dog attacks. You know, dog attacks is something that always happens to other people. I never imagined that I would almost die at the hand of a dog, but it's a reality. I come to realize that every year, 4.5 million people are attacked by dogs in this country. 4.5 million. In 2016, there was 31 deaths as a result of these attacks. 13 of them were children, 18 were adults that died because of dog attacks. And I think something can be done. I don't think we need to wait until somebody dies in Rainsville, Alabama. I really believe if I had died last Thursday, April 27th, something would have been done in a hurry. I don't want to wait until a child or a woman. This woman just riding her bicycle was attacked by a dog on Garrett Street. She's got humongous hospital bills, and she can't collect a penny to help her with those bills. People don't realize the trauma that you go through. I dream every night, I've been attacked by dogs. See big, old dogs. I dream about people trying to kill me using dogs. I guess I've healed up pretty good. The knot I've got in this jaw is dead. It's scar tissue. It'll have to be dealt with with a plastic surgeon. But there's some wounds. It's gonna take a while to heal right here. My daughter, Rachel Bobbitt, got out last Saturday and went from door to door in the neighborhood of where I was attacked by this dog. They found out that people in that entire area, almost everybody they went to, are scared to death. This dog roams free. It's already been put up one time and released again because it's killed one of the neighbor's dogs and attacked two other of the neighbor's dogs. It is a dangerous dog. And if something done in a hurry, I'm afraid, that it's gonna go beyond just wounds and attacks that I have gone through. I've pastored in this church for 33 and a half years. And you know, you always wonder, you know, how your final death is gonna come. I never one time imagined being killed by a dog, but April 27th, I came so close. A few more seconds, if Josh Wigley had not come to my rescue, I believe I would have died right there in the Wigley yard. And I just beg you, something can be done, if it has to be done countywide, if we gotta reach out and do something statewide, I beg you, do something before it's too late.
Thank you for bringing that to us and talking about it. And we've been, since this happened, we have been working with our attorney, Nikki Scott, and trying to make our ordinance better so we can take care of some of these problems like this right here with those dogs. Some of the things that, and I'll let her explain it in a few minutes, but you know, just to cheer this up a little bit and try to get rid of some of these dogs that you're talking about, you know, is what we're wanting to do. We can, let me, we'll go to Tommy next, and let him talk, and then we'll go into the ordinance, okay? All right?
Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you for giving me your time. Our sympathies all went out to Brother Hayman. When the word happened, it was horrible. And I guess Brother Hayman is the voice of those that have been attacked. I'd like to be the voice of us that hope not to be attacked. And I live at 2985 Rainbow Avenue North. Everybody's had this on their mind since all this happened. And we've had some wolf hybrids moving in right across the road from us. And you can, a quick Google search, it don't take much to figure out exactly what it is, the potential that's there. A wolf hybrid is defined as an animal that's immediately a remote descendant from the mating between a domestic dog and a wolf. A wolf is not domesticated, and therefore, any dog mixed with wolf, known as a wolf hybrid, should not be considered domesticated. Accordingly, from an animal behavior perspective, one would expect that an animal with this lineage would be unpredictable when placed in the human environment, particularly in an urban setting where contact with unfamiliar people, particularly children, may occur. Wolf hybrids retain many wolf-like characteristics which make their behavior unpredictable in the human setting. As a result, attacks upon humans have likely happened at a disproportionately higher rates, and there are documented accounts of fatal attacks by wolf hybrids in the United States. The problematic nature of wolf hybrids was noted in a widely read publication authored by a committee from the American Veterinary Medical Association. In this publication, committee members wrote, "Wolf hybrids are just that, hybrids between wild and domestic canids. Their behavior is unpredictable because it's hybridization, and they are usually treated as wild animals by local or state statutes. Whether wolf hybrids should be allowed in urban environments and treated like a domestic dog is controversial. Although differences exist between individual wolf hybrids, one must importantly realize that wolf hybrids are not fully domesticated. Accordingly, one must treat these animals with caution." And I'm just gonna reach you some of the characteristics of them. I say it every day. A tendency to howl rather than bark. It may be 11 o'clock at night, maybe 6 o'clock in the morning, or barking and yapping and howling. Head held low, moves with a slinking gait, adept at escaping from enclosures, resists authority, and pronounced dominance and predatory aggressive tendencies. And a quick Google search, it don't take much. Boy three loses arm after being mauled by wolf hybrids. His family have been breeding. This young man, five years old, disabled, attacked in his sleep by a wolf hybrid. His five-year-old boy died after he was partially eaten by a wolf hybrid. This one here, a Nevada woman, and this is the common thread that I hear all the time. You've probably heard it yourself. A Nevada woman was left shot Monday after her six-month-old daughter was mauled by the family pit bull. The only people that consider these animals pet-friendly, family-friendly, are the people that own them, not us that don't. And I've got a three-year-old daughter, I've got a 16-year-old daughter, and I've got a 20-year-old son. And I don't know anybody that would feel comfortable, I wouldn't, with mine around these kind of animals. And I don't understand, it's whatever anybody wants to do, but the facts are the facts, and that's what it is. But my question is this. From an insurance perspective, in this situation, my wife does insurance inspections for insurance companies on homes, and she has forms that she has to fill out. And only these forms ask a direct question. Are there vicious dogs on the property, yes or no? And one of the articles that I read, one of the young men, boys, was attacked, a three-year-old boy was attacked by his dog in his yard. And so, it's not so much everybody else. You could be attacked by the dog, the wolf dog, if it's yours. It's unpredictable. It doesn't matter, a wolf is a wolf. If it's in its DNA, it's in its blood, nothing you can do about that. It's there. But in this one particular article that I read, this 140-pound wolf dog jumped a fence, attacked a German shepherd, and to quote, semi-quote, the owner of the dog, after they got the dog, after they quarantined the dog, his quote was, "It's not a danger to the community." When does it become a danger to the community? When you can't walk, when you can't ride a bicycle, when you can't walk up and down the road without worrying about a dog attacking you. When you've done nothing, you're the one that pays taxes, you're the one that buys gas, you're the one that makes house payment, not the dog. But they got more rights than I've got going down the road. Had this been a man, a person that had attacked Brother Hayman, odds are, they'd still be in jail. 10 days later, the dog's back with his owner. Something's not right about that. I don't care if you're a dog owner, I don't care what you are, something is not right. I was approached Saturday afternoon about this, wondering why I was gonna talk about this. This is why. You see that? Had that been, had this been Gary Hayman, I'd be standing here right now talking about my daughter that's in the ground. That's not right. I don't care who you are, I don't care what you do, it's not right. This is why I'm standing here right now. And I hope, I hope, I hope, something can be done about this situation. I'm not being inflammatory, I understand, I'm a pastor in this community. I've lived here for six years, I loved every minute of it. I love this town enough that I sold everything I've got and built a house here. I love living here. But at the same time, I'm a husband, and I'm a daddy. Everybody says we've got rights. Everybody says there's no leach law in Rainsville, Alabama. But I'll tell you this, I have a right to defend what's mine. And I will take care of what's mine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. We had, like I had said, we have been working on this ordinance and doing some stuff to it. So, I'm gonna let Nikki explain what all we've come up with to add to the ordinance to make it better for the citizens' lives.
Mayor and city council members, I am so sorry about Pastor Hayman. And after that happened, my directive from the mayor was to try to formulate an ordinance that would address some of the issues that people would be concerned about. Rainsville has an ordinance that is called the Responsible Pet Ownership Ordinance, but when I looked at that, it didn't seem like it dealt with the main issue that people are concerned about is if the owner won't take care of keeping the dog put up, then what steps can we take so that the dog just doesn't get turned back over to the owner and then starts running loose again? So, I looked at ordinances from several other municipalities, ones in Birmingham and ones from all over the state, and talked to the League of Municipalities and got some samples that they had also. And then drew this ordinance from that and in looking at the ordinance that we already have in place. So, it adds to the one that we already have. But it basically says that if there is a dog that's determined to be vicious, aggressive, or dangerous, then a person has to keep it either inside or in a pen sufficient to make sure it doesn't get out on their property. And if the dog is not on their property, then it has to be muzzled or it has to be in a cage while it's being transported. And the owner is responsible for making sure that there's a responsible person to transport that dog. And there would be an authority, the ordinance refers to an animal control authority, that that would be someone designated by the city or the police department or an officer of the police department who can go investigate into a complaint about an aggressive dog. So, when the officer goes to investigate, then they have the right to enter the premises, they have the right to investigate to see if there is a dog, if it's not being kept up properly. If the dog is aggressive to the point that it's running loose and it's a danger to other people or other domesticated animals, then they can pick it up. And if it was too much of a danger, if it was a danger to them, then they could destroy the dog at that time. But the, anyone can make a complaint to the animal control authority to investigate the dog. And then that authority can, as it determines, make certain directives for the animal owner to comply with, to make sure that the animal is put up. And a complaint can also be filed with the city magistrate alleging that a dog is aggressive and asking for determination to be made by the municipal court that the dog is aggressive. And then the property owner or the animal owner would be given the opportunity to be present at a hearing, and both sides would be able to present evidence as to whether this dog is aggressive, what evidence they have to show that the dog is aggressive. And then a determination would be made on that. Now, during that period of time, the animal control authority may require the dog to be kept up or maintained out of the city limits, and the animal owner would be responsible for the cost of that during that period of time. But after a hearing, then certain things could be required, such as the animal, if the animal is declared to be aggressive, then the animal owner is required to keep the dog up, could be made to show that they have a policy of liability insurance and the amount of $100,000 that specifically covers any incidents involving this aggressive dog. Could be made to implant a chip in the dog to keep up with the dog's whereabouts, would have to sign an affidavit stating that the property owner's been advised and they will keep the dog up and keep the dog in a sufficient enclosure. If the dog is impounded, then the animal owner would have to pay the inbound fees, any fees for inoculations of the dog, any housing fees before the dog could be released. And if they didn't do that within a certain period of time, then the dog could be put down. And if the dog is declared to be an aggressive dog, then the owner could be ordered to, or required to maintain a beware of dog sign on his premises also. This ordinance would be read in conjunction with the previous ordinance, but to the extent that this one changes anything about the previous one, then this one would override that. And so, my directive was to go ahead and get something together fairly quickly for us to consider. And so, that's what I have done. And of course, later on, there's going to be a review and a workup of a possible new zoning ordinance altogether. And at that time, there could be things about this that are changed or improved and worked into that as a whole. But for right now, I think this addresses the issue of having a dangerous dog that is running at large in the community and being able to take care of that so that nobody is hurt.
Thank you. Thank you. One of the things that I noticed too, that we had put in there, is we're going to take some of our police officers and train them and let them start picking up some dogs, you know, the vicious dogs or whatever. And we're gonna start, we're gonna start shipping them to the county pound or county office where they, you know, house the dogs. Now, at that time, all that, all that cost is gonna go to the owner of those dogs. So, if we have one that's out here roaming the streets or whatever, we're gonna try, we're gonna try to start policing this a little bit closer, getting rid of some of these dogs off the street. That's something that the council had been talking about, and she put it in that ordinance too, and it's in there about that. So, we will get some guys trained up to take care of these dogs. So. Do you have any questions?
No, I think, Nikki, in the future, I think we're looking more suspicious as far as the housing of the dog. There's some dogs, I've been dogbed three times, I know what that's like. But you know, most dogs can jump a four-foot fence. So, we need to be looking at the ordinance. If they're gonna house a dog of this nature, then this should be more like an 10-foot fence. And if it's gonna attack somebody, then it would be the owner, it wouldn't be somewhere.
So, another thing that you're talking about is a brand-new four-foot fence that they've made electric, but it's still four-foot fence.
Four-foot fence. Yeah. If you clear the four-foot fence, you clear the electric.
Yeah.
So, we probably will add that in, in the housing of those animals. And I think probably eight-foot, six-foot, I think it's gonna be, at least be a minimal of eight feet.
What type of timeframe on all these reports to the police department is that gonna be?
I would say...
So, they could get killed in between that time?
Yeah. I would say that the time we get the equipment we need, we'll try to, we'll try to rush it up and get somebody trained. I'd say within the next couple of weeks, two weeks.
I'm talking about the reports that you're gonna have to file that the dog is roaming around and the whole process, somebody could get killed.
It would be a phone call.
It would be a phone call. All we've got to do is call and report it.
They have officers that'll be able to get it. Yep. So, it's not gonna be like a timeframe of you having to submit paperwork to get it in. If you make a phone call and it's a complaint that there's there, then we'll have an officer that can go then.
Yay. But what about our situation? I know this may be adopted for the good of the people to come, but what's gonna happen with our situation? Do we have a right to report this dog?
Sure.
Yeah, without a doubt.
Once this is passed, if this passes tonight, which it should, then it goes into effect immediately, as soon as it's run in the paper?
As soon as it's read in the paper.
Yeah, which hopefully will be this week.
It would be, if you see the dog loose, not on a chain, not in a pen, you make the phone call, and then we'll have the authority to do something about it.
Yeah.
And I did learn about this situation from the May 7th until the next morning. That's when I came to the mayor's office and the police department concerning that, and I had the man come and fill out a report. And to my knowledge, he hadn't received a copy of that report yet. Why does it take five to seven days to get a report out?
Did you go to the police department for that?
I sent Phil, the one that saw the dog on his report.
I got your answer for that. You know, we talked about that though the other day when the mayor came by and seen you. And over the last several years, things has changed. Part of the computer system with the public department, used to, you could go up there, have a rec today and get a report tomorrow. Now, everything's taken to the computer. I talked with some of the officers over the weekend. That has to go to Montgomery, they have to prove it and send it back. Is that correct, Chief?
That's correct.
So, that's the reason it takes so long to get a report. Now, it has to go to Montgomery and be approved, then sent back before they can actually give it out. That's some of the new computer system stuff that they're doing.
Just speed up. Post-speed processor.
I think a lot, I think something else that people may not know, is you can call, if you don't wanna fool with calling the police or whatever, you can call that, you know, a lot of people have been confused, you can call the animal shelter right now. And according to Leslie Ledbetter, who's the director of it, she says, "The day will come out..." out and get the dog. So I mean, that's something, it's already implied.
Yeah.
Yeah, we imposed that four or five years ago, I think.
We pay a fee.
And city paid for that. They're supposed to come and say.
That's, yeah, that's more during, I think that's more during like Monday through Friday timeframe. So what we're looking at is, is if we can get some volunteer officers that wants to work a little bit extra, we may do, like try to shear that up by doing the weekends, you know, if we have some calls, like a, a lot of people's out in their yards and around the house on the weekends, and that, that's when people see stuff like that. So if we can, if we can help that situation right there by putting somebody on that, that, that will go out there and get the dogs at that point, and carry them to the pound, then that'd be a good time to do it. So we'll work on the weekends and let him work through it. So.
We've had hundreds of texts, and calls, and emails in the last two weeks, people in Ranefield, Alabama. They said they're scared to walk anymore, they're scared to ride their bicycles anymore in this city.
Well hopefully we can fix this situation and, and make it better for everybody in the city.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes ma'am.
If you encounter that dog off of that owner's property, what kind of protection do you have? What, what's legal that you can put that dog down yourself?
If I may, you have to be able to show you're in danger, obviously. You know, the dog's attacking, sure, you have the right to defend yourself, absolutely.
With what?
Whatever means necessary.
If you have a gun, can you-
I would like you to think about though, if you're, if you're carrying a firearm, you're in a populated area. Think about that, obviously. The best bet, obviously, is call us, let us come out. And a lot of people don't understand how the law works. Well, the misdemeanor violation that this ordinance is, or was, we have to see that dog with our eyes. It's, it's called the misdemeanor rule, okay? There are certain exceptions to that, with it being domestic violence, and DUI, seeing crashed, is only two exceptions to misdemeanor rule. But when you call, we, we come out, we investigate, we make a report of it. The more reports we have, the more, it gives us more that we can do.
Yeah. Can I say something?
Sure, please do.
He didn't have time to call.
And I understand that, ma'am.
What if that was a child? What if that was a woman? If he couldn't bite that dog off, I never could.
I understand what you're saying.
I can't even take a Charlie off by myself.
I understand.
I mean, I'm disabled, but I need my husband, and I also want other people protected. I don't live in that neighborhood, I'm five miles away.
Yes ma'am.
But I know a lot of people that do, and they're very concerned. So whatever we do, it needs to be countywide.
Yes.
And I think we need to protect our people. I have put in a paperwork to the governor, I've put in for the attorney in general to help do something, and I, I want to see something done.
Well, Ms. Heyman, the good thing is with this ordinance that they've prepared, I think will, will go to do a lot to change this problem. It gives us the authority to do what we need to do. Because the other ordinance is so limited of what we could do, with what Ms. Scott's written now, and what the council has opportunity to pass tonight, that will give us that much more that we can take care of the citizens with.
Well, can we do something that will keep the next people that come into office from getting rid of that ordinance that we've gone through here tonight for?
I'm, I'm not qualified to answer that, Ms. Heyman, to be honest with you.
I don't know what we can do on that side of it.
I, I can enforce the law, I can't change the law.
But why go through all of this if somebody's gonna come into office and throw it out for waste?
Well, for the next three years, we're gonna fix it.
Yeah, we hope with whoever that may say-
But it's happened though.
Oh, I understand. I agree. But I mean, we hope with whoever would be in the presence-
I know Mrs. Carroll would probably think, I wish I could've done something more, but it don't be any good to go through all this stuff, and it's unreal what we've gone through. And then go through this, and it be to no avail, and somebody gets killed.
It is pertaining to Brother and Sister Heyman. And it's the only thing I don't think that I've heard, so I'm just going to ask for them. Like the medical bills that Brother Heyman is gonna incur from this, because he's gonna have to have some plastic surgery, even with this ordinance, once it takes place. Even if this man does keep his dog on a leash, the people, we walk door to door, they're afraid. They're afraid to go outside and walk up and down. So, and, and just honestly, I and a bunch of people would like to see this particular dog put down, because it has already attacked, and this is coming after that. When then what about the medical bills? Even if this goes into effect, and they're, it sounds like gonna try to make something to, to help others in the future, that we hope doesn't happen, but what about like Brother Heyman? Is there gonna be anything, you know, set in, in that, or in another way, that's gonna be able to, to help him in that way?
Well, this ordinance does say that if there is a hearing, and the dog is found to be aggressive or dangerous, then the owner can be assessed for, can be fined, can be jailed, can be assessed court calls, and restitution can be assessed also.
So that's for like a pass, like, like even though it's frequent, but-
For medical bills and that sort of thing.
Who makes that decision?
Um, that would be a, a determination that the court would make.
With this law going into effect tonight, would it cover Brother Heyman's situation a month ago? Or would he have to hire a private attorney to get compensation for his hospital bills? I think that's what, a lot of what we're here for, to-
He's always got that option. I mean, this doesn't do anything to keep him from having that option.
We're aware of that. Our main goal for here tonight is to change things that people can be safe. I told my husband, now he is the type of person that would never sue a person, but you can't be that way when it comes to retirement time, and God put out all that kind of money. But our main objective tonight is to make sure that people are safe. We have a lot of children that live near that neighborhood.
My little niece lives just a couple miles down, so that's a big deal for me.
Oh yeah?
You know.
I used to live on that street, before that happened.
I have a question about the insurance. I'm, I'm Tommy's wife, and I do insurance inspections, and do we have to wait till there's an issue before the owner of a vicious dog has proved that they, that their insurance company knows that they have those pets, and that, that they are, there is some kind of liability, insurance liability, liability insurance? Do they have to, when they move into a neighborhood in the city limits, do they have to show proof of insurance, or is it only have, after something happens?
Well, it's, it's not everybody that has to show proof of insurance if they have a dog.
Right.
So we don't know a lot of times whose dog is gonna prove to turn out like this.
If you've got a family that moves in with a Chihuahua, you ain't gotta worry about that. They're not gonna kill anybody. Cause you've got somebody that moves in with a pit bull, wolf hybrid, something of that nature that we know is vicious, there's no doubt about it. That's, I guess, the point. That's, that's the point.
You're asking about the insurance.
Well, your insurance will drop you with certain types of, or, or either your rates will escalate greatly, but they have the option to drop you. So the people that live around there, hopefully nothing would ever happen, but the people that live in that neighborhood should have some kind of, of confidence that there's insurance in place should something happen, that any incident would be covered. I'm not talking about just a family pet, I'm talking about a pit bull, you know, the vicious dogs we're here talking about, that's what I, that's what I mean.
This ordinance does not call out any particular breeds. Now, if that's something that we chose to do in the future, then that may be another issue, but it doesn't, you know, you, it doesn't say if you have a rottweiler or a pit bull, you gotta prove you got insurance. It just says if you have a dog that's determined to be aggressive, vicious, dangerous, then you have to show the city that you've got this insurance to cover that event. Now, it could be broader than that, and it could be broadened, but as of now, I think your question is, does it do that? And no, it does not.
So it doesn't define what vicious means?
It does define what vicious means. Actually vicious was already defined in the previous ordinance as being a dog that has attacked a person, or another domesticated animal, or a dog that basically, when you go by the yard, it runs out and chases you and growls and shows its teeth, that kind of thing. So the ordinance does talk about a definition for aggressive vicious animals, but it doesn't call out any particular breeds, as we find right off the bat, you know, a pit bull's vicious, and a rottweiler's vicious, it doesn't do that.
Right.
Now-
This will be a more wider variety, cause it could be a muck, it could still be vicious at some point, so that way it's not being-
You're welcome to get a job here and look at that, cause right there, like it's defined what?
I guess I was just concerned who is going to define what vicious meant, but if it's defined, then that is the question.
Well, you have to be attacked in order for that to be filed as a vicious dog.
No.
And we already had an attack on another animal that he killed, and another animal that he hurt, too. But because it wasn't two humans, then it was just like wanting to be covered, that was just gonna be done.
In, in this ordinance, it covers that with dogs or humans. So going forward, this ordinance is gonna make it a little clearer that we can go out and check on that dog and probably put it up.
Nobody we've talked to that have, that has a pit bulldog, an American bulldog, or a violent type dog, everybody I've talked to, their, their dogs are so sweet, and nonviolent, and they're just like kids. But we had a boy in our church just a few weeks ago, petting the dog, and it finished live off.
Even our grandson, I forgot, last year, the same thing happened to him, and a seven-year-old boy. Just there petting a family dog, and it just ripped his leg.
Most kids that are killed are killed by a pit bulldog, or an American bulldog, that's a family pet. Never been violent, but kills, kills their kids.
But you gotta have somebody that's gonna get hurt before you can do anything about it, and that, that's not good enough for me. Personally, that's not good enough for me.
Brother Heyman, personally, sometimes with you, what happened to you, I wish it would not happen, but this problem is not, like you say, is not the city of Ranefield, or the county, or state, it's nationwide. Like you say, I researched that, about four and a half million people get by, by the dogs. And hopefully tonight, we make a change here in this town, city of Ranefield, that we're gonna put it in the paper, we're gonna put it on the news, that this is the beginning of the, right, to, to do something about it. And we're not gonna sit down to everything being okay, if we have to go to governor, who we're gonna have to go to.
Can you answer my question, like what I asked a while ago? What other option, other than a gun, does a person have? You can't call the policeman. What other option can you use to protect yourself right then and there, because you can't wait on the policeman, you may not have-
If you ask me personally, I would shoot that dog. Obviously, do it first, and forgive us later.
Yeah, but you could go to jail because you're in the city.
Gee, I don't think you, I don't think you-
I know somebody that was born this way.
Now, I'm sorry, I don't need to get on the ride. You're not, ma'am, not at all.
This is personal, whatever.
Absolutely.
I saw my husband die nearly two times.
Yes ma'am.
In two weeks' time.
I want to encourage you to protect yourself, whatever means necessary. I mean, I, I can't emphasize that enough. Whatever you've gotta do, you have the, you have, by law, you have the authority to do so.
But this particular dog, somebody tried to kill it, and it was on their property this week, and they were told not to do that.
You have to show that that animal's been aggressive at that moment.
You're dead then.
At, at that point, ma'am, you have a right, that's what I'm telling you, you have a right to do whatever you need to do to defend yourself, okay?
But are you gonna haul me into jail?
Absolutely not. You have a right to defend yourself. You have that, you have that a right under the second amendment of the Constitution.
I did, I was buried in the backyard.
I'm not angry.
I, I want you to understand that you do have the right to defend yourself during an attack like that, absolutely. If he'd pulled a weapon out and shot that dog, I would say, hey, I'm glad you're okay, because he has a right to defend himself, under constitution.
So are you saying that, like this dog has already turned vicious by us? Like there's not a determination after what he did? So like, why, why are we even talking about if he does it again? He is a vicious dog. You don't attack a man and nearly kill him and not consider something vicious.
Ma'am, I, I agree with you, but I have to act under the color of law that is, that is in my possession, of what the law is, is written right now. I can't change the law, I can only enforce law. Your governing body, which is the council, they're changing that law tonight, hopefully, and then that gives us the tools that we need as, as police officers to do with-
Now, what do you mean as hopefully?
I just, I can't say if they're gonna pass the law or not, ma'am, I, I don't have a vote in that.
I guess I'm, I'm just a, I'm a minute person, I like that.
We're, we're, we're gonna get started, it's a couple minutes after five, we're supposed to start at five, but we'll, we're running a little bit late, but we'll get started. Marshall?
Here.
Bijon?
Here.
Ricky?
Here.
Brandon?
Here.
Derek?
Here.
Me Dave?
I make a motion to accept the minutes from the last council meeting presented by the clerk.
A second.
Oh, we have a motion in a second to accept the minutes of the last council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I say it. Okay, the first thing I have on my list is the rezoning of the property that we talked about a little bit earlier in the zoning meeting, and that will be on, we have to suspend the rules of immediate consideration for an ordinance, and that's an ordinance. So, someone make that motion.
I make a motion, we suspend the rules of immediate consideration for the rezoning ordinance number five, fifteen, twenty, seventeen, eight.
A second. We have a second. That's a roll call vote, and we'll start down there with Derek.
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Row?
Yes.
Jay?
Aye.
Yes.
Derek.
Yeah. So it passes. Now then, we can make a motion, someone make the motion to accept the ordinance as presented.
I make a motion to accept the ordinance as presented.
A second.
We have a motion in a second to accept the ordinance, the zoning ordinance as presented. We have to have a roll call vote on it again, so Derek?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
Ricky?
Yes.
Derek.
Yeah, so it's, you know, both times. Okay, so that meeting has been changed to, from commercial to our third. All right. The next thing on my list is to give the, me, the, to empower me to sign the CDG, no, not CDG, a DACTA grant that Tim Irwin's been working with us on, and it's for Ranch Road up here, where we'll get a, I think it's an eighty, twenty grant, so.
I make a motion, we empower the mayor to do the CDBG grant.
Ready?
All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that fires. All right, the next one is the responsible pet ownership ordinance to amend that with the, with the ordinance, to, to do an ordinance change in that, a revision to it. And that will be five dash fifteen dash two thousand and seventeen B. It'll be a roll call again, so someone make a motion.
I make a motion.
To expend, suspend the rules.
Second.
A motion in a second to suspend the rules to, for immediate consideration of an ordinance. Derek?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
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 Derek.
Yeah, so we have suspended the rules, and now we, we have to vote on that again. So we have to adopt the revision to the ordinance, five dash fifteen dash two thousand and seventeen B, which is the responsible, the pet ordinance. Somebody make a motion for that.
I still move, mayor.
Oh, we have a motion- Oh, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second to adopt that. Uh, roll call?
Yay.
Brandon.
Yay.
Ricky.
Yay.
Double yay.
Double. Okay, it passes. Okay, so it has passed, it will go in the paper, it's, uh, this week, and so that will, uh, that will get that. Okay, uh. Uh, library, we'll start down there and I'll let you do the library worker.
How you pronounce the name again? Three Chevres. Three Chevres, I make a motion, we hire three Chevres for thirty-hour position at the library.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to hire thirty-hour worker at the library. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I say.
Apologize, it's the name of it.
Okay, do you have anything else other than that?
Oh, I really don't, we just got a couple of training exercises at the fire department coming up on May twenty-second through to May twenty-sixth. Uh, Captain Sumford's attending instructor, one class. June third, May twenty-second, June third, we got emergency vehicle driver class with volunteers, uh, be online. Also, May twentieth, the, uh, Ranch Fire Department will be assisting with RTI with the wedding and the volleyball I could do every year. So we'll be assisting with that too. Chief, you got anything else you wanna bring up then?
I did.
Dog got really.
All right.
Just trying, everything's really looking pretty good for the fire department.
Brandon.
And I talked with the mayor about this, we were some of the council, but, uh, in our farmer's market that we started the park, it'll be kicking off in June. And I talked with some, we have a lot of elderly people coming there and they can't really stand up on this ice spot where it's so hot. So we're working on a project to build, like an on-it, twelve foot by a hundred and fifty feet, where people can park in a covered shed and they can actually stay on the sidewalks and be off of the concrete or the asphalt so it's so hot. And I spoke with our House Representative and stuff, and they're gonna make a donation to go to this cause. But you're looking at a bill for roughly about fifteen thousand dollars. I'm gonna ask that we can spend that money on building a covered building for the farmer's market.
Is that before the motion? All right, we have a motion.
Second.
In a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
And also, mayor, the last two weeks, Phil Drinks, we've had a huge softball tournament. We had twenty seventeen two weeks ago, we had twenty-one teams last week. And this week, we've got a big BPA baseball tournament that's gonna be up there all weekend, so on that aspect, everything's looking good. The swimming pool was on docket, they put a coat in it today and they should be putting water in it right now.
Okay.
What's the old plan, damn, too?
We're hoping Memorial Day at the latest, we're hoping maybe a little bit before that, but that's, we're still, we got very little bit left to do in the pool house and we've got the, the coating that's going on top of the concrete. So it'll be as soon as it gets full and they finish that off, so hopefully within the next week, they'll be doing the coating. So we'll, hopefully in the next week, everything will be done. And that's all I got, mayor.
Probably.
My only thing I got, I got a couple things, uh, Philip Gibson, we had done some changes and something cracked. We need to change his title to maintenance, lawn maintenance supervisor.
Okay.
I don't know.
You can put that on the motion.
Yeah, I put it in the motion.
Thank you.
All right, I have a motion in a second to change Philip Gibson, uh, to mowing supervisor. And he is actually gonna be over all the mowing, whether it's bush hogging, uh, the contractors we have, or whatever, he's gonna be over all of that and oversee it. So I have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Uh, other thing, mayor, only thing I would rather, recognize the girl's softball team for their achievements. The, uh, make it a state pretty unique, uh, this is made, we made it. Cause maybe we don't, we get tired later.
There you go.
Max and Greg's late team, that's our eye.
Bijon.
Mayor, uh, the report on the Chevy's Bridge, uh, progress, uh, CDG finally went on there and staked out the roadway and brought down the notes, what, what they're gonna be taking. But along with that, we have to hire the private appraisal guy to go down there and praise the property. So, uh, this guy, his name is Bradley Weisner, he's retired from state DOT and he's done that all his life on his career. So he sent us the, uh, proposal for eleven thousand one hundred and fifty dollars to praise six property owners. And he started on breakdown, if some of these properties is donated, then he don't have to do any negotiation, all of this is a paperwork. But otherwise.
Bill is not in.
Bill is, yeah, but the maximum is to be eleven thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. So I put that in motion the fastest.
Second. Well, he can go to war.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
In a second, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And that's all I got to add.
Marshall, you got it?
I don't know.
Okay, all right, um, I think that's got, that worked, okay. I have a motion to pay the monthly bills, all in.
A second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn, in a second, all in favor? All opposed? You should stay. All right, let's go.